All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call our meeting to order if we please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We are missing one board member tonight. Dr. Lynch will not be joining us this evening. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in front of us tonight.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Dawn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. In our packet, we have one set of meeting minutes, and that is from our Board of Ed meeting, along with the executive session that occurred on May 9th last month. Everything seemed to be in order. Does anybody have any questions or corrections before we entertain a motion? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Dennis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tricia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Does anybody have any announcements this morning, or this evening?
I guess I could just mention that the Clarence Clothing Closet won an Erie County School Boards Collaboration Award at this awards dinner this past week, and Tricia and I won or received leadership awards. So, we're grateful to have those opportunities. And hopefully, those of you that don't know about the Clothing Closet, there's going to be some feature story done on the Facebook page, and we're hoping maybe that we would run an article. So, look for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Has anybody else said anything?
Just mentioned, we just came from a reception to honor our new teachers who received tenure, and also our retiring staff members. It was very nice.
Very nice event. Well, moving forward, on the agenda that was available to those walking in and published on the website, the correspondence that we received since the last Board of Ed meeting was listed, I will amend that, as that was published Friday, for two items that we received over the weekend into today. So, we did receive two correspondence relative to school safety, three regarding student matters. We did receive an additional email, so six total concerning Regents tests, and then we did have one concerning the annual Board of Ed elections. I'm not aware of any unfinished business. Does anybody have anything to bring forward to the board before moving forward? Okay. Dr. Frame, I turn the mic over to you for the superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. Dennis had just mentioned a ceremony for tenure recipients and Clarence retirees this evening, so I wanted to thank our board members for being present for that. An incredible group of people retiring after years and years of service to the Clarence Central School District. So, I did just want to pause to recognize those folks for all of their service and their impact on our kids and community. I did just want to pause, and not a retiree, but someone who will be leaving us on monthly Monday nights, and to thank Mary Beth Sweeney for her leadership as a board trustee. And just, Mary Beth, serving at a challenging point in time, and my guess is your time on the board has seen a lot of different issues, and just so appreciative for your consistent, steady, upbeat, and positive approach. So, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure.
Thank you for your leadership. Feel free to join us next year, Monday nights.
Thank you.
Check the website for times and locations. So, we wish you the best and look forward to connecting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary Beth. A couple just last things. We know that when community members voted on the school budget and board elections back in May, they also voted to create a student position on the Board of Education. It's a non-voting member, they would not participate in executive sessions, but they would be a great connection to our student body. And so, that was overwhelmingly approved. So, we have the ability to invite a high school student to participate with us next year. So, if you remember, our two high school student council advisors had brought the idea to the board back in the fall, and so the community was supportive of the idea. The question now is, what mechanism do we put in place for that board's service? I will share, just in terms of talking with colleagues in other districts, it's handled in a variety of ways. Some districts will have an elected member of their student council typically serve, usually it would be a president. Some will have its own separate position, where they would run and be elected by the student body. So, our student council advisors have talked with their executive team for next year. Their recommendation is to have the student council president also serve as the Board of Education representative, which is something that you will see in school districts. So, I had spoken with Mr. Smith about it. He'd been in touch with our advisors. Wanted to bring it up tonight to see if there were questions or concerns about that mechanism. If there are questions or concerns, I can go do a little bit of digging and report back. Or if you're hoping to see something else put in place, I can go and meet with the advisors. If you think that it sounds like a reasonable expectation, then I can connect with the advisors, and we can work on transitioning that young person to the board over the summer and the fall. So, I'll open it up for some conversation with our board.
Well, I'm supportive of their recommendation. I know, because of my daughter's involvement on the executive committee, I know that they did give a thorough thought to the process and considered it. And I know the gentleman that would be serving in the position, I think he's well-equipped to serve on the board. I think one thing that he would bring that I think is what we hope to have an individual bring to that role, is somebody that is connected to all the grades in the high school and the broader community, and not just necessarily the senior class. So, I'm supportive of the recommendation.
Anyone else question, concerned, or supportive?
Matt, I'm also in support of that decision.
Okay. I believe, is it Emmett Forrestal?
Yeah.
Is the student who is elect? Okay, we've got a motion from the floor.
[laughing]
All right, so we've got a couple votes of support from the board.
Yeah, I would support that. They would have been elected anyway in the schools, so I'm sure.
Okay, great. So, I will report back. This is a little bit new for us, so we'll be defining and growing this role as we get going to next year. I just want to say thank you for being willing to consider the idea. Appreciate the community being supportive. I think it's one of those things that, you know, we're a place for kids, for students, and to have a student voice for our board meetings, I look forward to that next year. So, I'll connect back and give our board a report. We do have a couple different presentations this evening. We have some CSF Spring Grant awardees, and then we have a group of leaders from our elementary schools. We'll be giving a curriculum presentation and proposal this evening, and then have Dave Bissonnet for us for a safety overview this evening. So, we've got a lot of important things to talk about. So, Chris Brophy, thank you so much for being here, and I believe you have good news from CSF.
I do, I do. This spring, CSF moved our grant application process to a fully online process, which was an exciting move for us to make. Once the applications are received, they get reviewed with Kristin Overholt, just to look at them, to see if there's any maybe district funds that can cover some of those, or maybe there was something that was overlooked that could have been covered by any grants that are within the district or whatever, and we always seem to find a couple that covers. And then, from there, it moves forward to our grant committee. The Grant Selection Committee looks for grants that enhance the educational experiences of students at Clarence School District by offering ancillary enrichment in the arts, sciences, math, technology, applied career skills, or athletics. When looking at the applications, we take into consideration the number of students that will be impacted, the needs of the project, research that supports the value of the project, and the alignment of the grants with the goals of the school district and the individual buildings within the district, as well as the ability to show the impact that project will have on the school's environment. Just the effort that goes into submitting a grant is commendable. It really takes a lot of time and effort and work on the part of the faculty that submits those grants. The grants are particularly exciting this cycle, because we really feel that they truly address the current needs of the school environment. And on behalf of CSF, I'd like to present the Board of Education, the Spring Grant recipients of our biannual grant program. First, Jillian Dean, as you spoke about earlier, did a grant for the Clothing Closet at the high school. As Dawn mentioned, the Clothing Closet recently received the Hotchkin Rust LLP Collaboration Award at the Erie County Association of School Boards Annual Dinner. As Jillian mentioned in her application, the Clothing Closet is run primarily through a partnership with the district's work-based learning program and the high school business classes. This enterprise focuses on providing trendy clothes to all students at no cost to them at all. CSF is thrilled to be able to support the wonderful work that is being done through this program. Next, Bradley Wright and Zach Mehl at the middle school brought forward the desire for a 3D printing lab at the middle school. Currently, the middle school has one 3D printer that was purchased over four years ago, and it really can't handle what they want to be doing with their technology program. The creation of a 3D printing laboratory will allow all seventh and eighth grade middle school students to use modeling software to rapidly prototype any project ideas that they have. CSF is going to be providing the funding for one of the new printers in the lab, and the school has already purchased two more to add to that. So, there will be four 3D printers in the lab. And we also have a technology person on our CSF board who is going to be going and working with the middle school and talking to them on things that they can do with it. So, that's pretty exciting. Lastly, Jill Press of Pazniak, Ramona Hales, and Lori Hall approached CSF with a fabulous idea for the sixth grade as an extension of the Leader in Me program. As you're aware, over the last couple of years, COVID protocols brought an increase in computer usage, not only in education, but in student interactions with online gaming, game playing, and so on. Mrs. Hall started implementing a tournament Tuesday in her classroom during their HQ time, which HQ is the new homeroom time, and she observed the many benefits that playing board games provided her students. The grant provided by CSF will fill a game closet at the middle school with a large variety of board games and outdoor games that can be used by the entire sixth grade next year. We actually, Ramona Hales is here. In this crazy time of year, a lot of our grant recipients couldn't come today, but Ramona, if you want to come up and at least grab your certificate.
Actually, excuse me, Chris, I think we might have two more walking in.
Oh, and there's Brad Wright and Zach Mehl here. You're welcome to come forward and receive your certificates from our board liaison, Don Snyder and Dr. Frame. Each of these worthy recipients provided research showing the benefits of their projects and are testaments to the wonderful faculty and support staff that continually strive to go above and beyond for our Clarence students. Since the beginning of our grant program the fall of 2014, CSF has awarded over 150 mini-grants totaling nearly $164,000. These programs have been made possible by the generous donations from members of our community and through the support of our major fundraising events through the years. With the cancellation of major events since the beginning of the pandemic, we appreciate the support of the community through our online donation requests and raffles. And we currently have a raffle right now for a Great Summer Nights outdoor package. You can find it on our Facebook page or on ClarenceSchoolFunds.org. And we also are looking for more volunteers. So, anybody who has some time on their hands and who would like to come and join us in the work that we do, there's a lot of great things that we do, fun things in the fall, just providing some enrichment things to kids, and also some fundraising that will be going on next year. On behalf of the foundation, I publicly want to applaud the 2022 grantees for developing enrichment activities for the students of Clarence. CSF is thrilled to support these opportunities and celebrate the efforts of these district employees and their dedication and commitment to their students.
Yeah, thank you so much. We're thrilled to be receiving this grant. It's like getting these 3D printers, I'd compare it to like going from working with Flint Steel to like working with a flamethrower now. Like, these things are so awesome. So, it's going to really benefit the kids, and like every kid's going to get off to follow these things, like technology. But, so, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Chris, for being here tonight. Thank you to CSF for your incredible support for our faculty, staff, and students, and thanks, Dawn, for your leadership as a liaison to that group. Second up, in terms of reports tonight, wanted to spend time talking about curriculum alignment primarily at the elementary school level. And I won't talk too much about it. I'll leave that, Kristin, for you and your team. But I did want to just spend a moment talking about priority, and then talking about need or some of the issues that we're bumping into. We know that curriculum development and alignment is critical in the work that we do. If you look at our strategic plan, that is one of the components to our strategic plan. When we reflect back on board retreats from this year, it is at the top of the list when our board looks at work here in the district. So, we know that curriculum work is really important. A couple challenges that we bump into with regard to curriculum. One is our size. So, when you think about the learning that happens in classrooms, oftentimes we'll hear conversation about standards. And so, standards, if we're thinking about building a home, standards are a little bit like that building code. So, you start with the standards, and then when you actually start to pick out the design of the home and color and all those sorts of things, that's work that happens at the sort of classroom level, right? The challenge that we bump into is a relatively large district. And so, when you look at alignment, not just at a grade level in one elementary school, but across four elementary schools, we want to make sure that it's not just the same building code, but that the houses look sort of similar when you go from one building to the next, and a recognition that if your child goes to school in Ledgview, they should not have an experience that's that much different from a kid that goes to school at Sheridan Hill or Harris Hill or Clarence Centers. And those things don't just happen naturally. You have to put resources and time and thought behind it. A second issue that we're bumping into, and we know this from this evening, is we just had a lot of people retire in the district. And so, that level of craft knowledge that is walking out the door doesn't just get built up by accident. It gets built up over years of professional development and curriculum work, and we need to be purposeful about when we hire people, how do we get them the training and the curriculum support that they need in order for them to be their best selves and do incredible things for our kids. The last maybe challenge that we've bumped into is that for the past two years, when we've looked at the quadrant labeled urgent and important, it has had the pandemic in it largely. So, a lot of our conversations have been about making sure that when kids come to school, there's safe spaces, talking about leveraging technology as learning resources. But in a lot of ways, the conversation has focused more on instructional strategies and tech supportive learning, as opposed to what's the curriculum look like that teachers are using, and developing the skills they need to do great things for kids. So, we had asked a group of not only excellent practitioners in their own right, but leaders when we think about our four elementary schools here in Clarence, to work with Dr. Overholt on a recommendation or a presentation for how we can take our curriculum work to the next level. And so, just so appreciative that Kristin is willing to work with this team. This is a really busy time of year, but they've been at it for a couple months now. They walk by my office as they're meeting in Conference Room B. So, just so appreciative that this group has been willing to dig into the work and share some of their thoughts and recommendations this evening. So, Kristin, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Frame, and good evening, everyone. And again, I would just like to first begin with thanking this tremendously talented group of educators before you this evening. And as Dr. Frame just mentioned, although we've been preparing for the past few months for tonight's presentation, this is a discussion that we've been having amongst administrators and teachers for some time, what we're going to discuss with you this evening. And currently, we find ourselves at a pivotal moment when we examine our district curriculum, as well as the appropriations for federal grant funding. So, as Dr. Frame mentioned, all four elementaries are represented here this evening. So, with that, I'm going to actually begin with the teacher leader introduction. So, I'm going to invite them up and have them introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Gretchen Doctor. I teach fourth grade at Harris Hill. Thank you for having us this evening.
Hi, Linda Reagan, first grade, Harris Hill. Thanks.
Good evening, Melissa Graham, second grade at Ledgview.
Hello, everyone. Roz Vossi, Sheridan Hill, second grade.
Hello, I'm Tammy Gordon, fourth grade at Clarence Center. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Michelle Layer, fifth grade at Clarence Center. And we're going to get to hear a little bit more from each of our presenters this evening. As Dr. Frame mentioned, one of the strategic goals for our school district is to ensure that we provide a guaranteed and viable curriculum to all students. Research shows that when a guaranteed and viable curriculum exists in schools, there are higher levels of student achievement, as well as a reduction in variability when it comes to students' academic experiences. Tonight, our team of teacher leaders will share some of the challenges that we are now facing in light of the pandemic, as well as teacher leadership opportunities that may assist the district in better supporting students and teachers in closing the gaps in academic performance. Gretchen?
Thank you. I have to put my glasses on. As you know, COVID-19 has resulted in an interruption in structures and systems to support curriculum consistency. We started the work in 2018-2019 school year to reestablish learning goals for the units of study in reading and writing. We began this work because although the district adopted the same reading and writing programs, with time, the regular use of the programs and interventions had begun to vary across educational contexts and buildings. Regular reflection on the content of curriculum, continuity due to responsive teaching, and ever-evolving student needs require this work. During the 2020-2021 school year, we used the half-day model, thank you for that, board, which was wonderful for our young learners, because we saw our students each day. However, we needed to truncate our ELA curriculum and hone in on what was the most essential parts of it. Also, as we continue to deal with the ramifications of the post-pandemic student, it became even more essential that we teach responsively and make curricular choices based on the needs we see in our classrooms. As a result, the need exists to recalibrate the district-wide scope and sequence, pacing guides, and instructional strategies. Now, Melissa Graham will talk to you a little bit more.
Since the 1920 school year, we've hired over 40 probationary teachers at the elementary level. Due to the circumstances of COVID, these teachers have not received the professional development that veteran teachers have had the opportunities for throughout their careers in Clarence. We are at a crossroads, and it's imperative that moving forward, we not just arm these new teachers with literacy knowledge, but ignite in them a passion for being learners themselves, who thirst for and are invested in being the absolute best that they can be, as well as providing outstanding literacy experiences to our students. The school year substitute coverage for district-wide curriculum planning, meetings, and professional development has been reduced significantly. The lack of substitute teachers makes coverage unreliable. Faculty and staff need time to collaborate and deepen their understanding of the curriculum and the programs, as well as best practices within the school day. All of this combined has created curriculum consistency challenges.
So, we asked teachers to complete a professional needs assessment, and after reviewing the survey results, there was a lot, here are the areas of priority where teachers felt they needed more support. In both reading and writing, there were specific components that stood out as needing our attention.
The first component needing some focus is the teacher-directed mini-lesson within the workshop structure. Next, students practice independently while the teacher confers works in guided reading groups, as well as strategy groups. It was noted that conferring is an area that we need to circle back to. The use of mentor texts due to helps students consume and critique exemplar samples to help them produce strong writing.
Finally, we noticed that assessments were another need. We need these assessments not only as a part of our daily lessons, but also to help us better our instruction, and as a tool also at the end of the unit, to see if students are able to master the curriculum that we've taught them. So, to summarize, our teachers need a refresher on the planning, organization, and assessment tools used to inform our instruction and interventions used during small group reading. Coaches in our elementary schools will have the time and opportunity to work through the current needs of our classroom teachers and to help strengthen teacher instruction and student achievement.
There was no surprise that Phonics First would be on our survey as an area of priority, since it was our first year of implementation for kindergarten and grade one. So, with any program, we learn as we go, and next year, we'll be implementing it in second grade as well. And we needed this Phonics First program because we needed a systematic and research-based method for teaching phonics, and this was a missing component in our reading instruction. So, we're really, really happy that we have Phonics First, and as we've implemented it this year, we definitely have learned a lot, and now we kind of know more about what we need for next year to make it even better. And what's wonderful about it is that the program allows for general education teachers, special ed teachers, and related service teachers to work together to provide a direct instruction for phonics. So, we're all speaking the same language. So, a lot of times, my students will go up to our reading specialist, Dr. Reiman, and they come back, and we're all speaking the same language of phonics, and it really has made a big difference in our classrooms. And it's really, really nice, especially for those remedial readers, to speak the same language when they're in a pull-out program and when they come back to our classroom. And it's really nice to see it seamless across the board. And this regular, consistent collaboration between teachers is needed for the reading success for our students.
And you can see with the heart graphic that we chose for this, is that really the Phonics First is the heart of the reading program. And as Linda said, it's much needed. But you know, with the implementation of a new program, comes the ripple effects. In order to provide a clear, consistent plan for our students, many things need to be updated. We need to clarify and align with the Phonics First method of instruction. We need to revise our early literacy profile, which is the tool we use to assess students in K-1, and we also need to add it to second grade as well. We need to provide a consistent pacing guide for all teachers to follow. So, again, as Kristin said, we need to be consistent among the four elementaries in our implementation. We need to provide an opportunities for teachers to ask questions and collaborate. So, we have some actionable goals for you. To address these curricular challenges at the elementary level, we must reestablish the overarching goals and components of a comprehensive literacy program. This can be done by reconvening our ELA curriculum teams to include building-based literacy teams, grade-level PLCs, PLCs are professional learning communities, and also the reconvening of the district-wide ELA committee.
We must have embedded structures and systems within each of the elementary schools that provide a connected network for curriculum support and implementation. This is important so that, as Dr. Frame said earlier, all children, regardless of which Clarence school they are in, receive the same instructional experience. We have a responsibility to ensure that all structures and systems are consistent across the district.
As teachers, we learn best by going into each other's classrooms and just seeing how other teachers teach things. We are sponges. We go in there, and we're like, oh my goodness, I love the way that you do this, and I love the way you do this. And it's one of the most effective ways for us to learn, is just being with each other and seeing each other's crafts. And it helps us hone our own craft better by seeing masters in action. And these positions would provide just-in-time professional development by having literacy mentoring and coaching, so that if a teacher was in need of some kind of growth, the people would be able to go in and provide that just-in-time professional development, and teacher training opportunities would be available for faculty and support staff.
And finally, we must provide regular and consistent opportunities for collaboration with teacher leaders, our PLC, in the implementation of the curriculum and best instructional practices. The support structure will not be disrupted by substitute shortages.
So, what do we do with that information and the challenges before us? So, in taking a look at what models exist, what we know is that- So, in taking a look at what models exist, what we know is this, that instructional support that is embedded through coordinated teacher leadership, as well as coaching, has shown to have an incredible impact on instructional practice. This model has had and has a profound effect on teaching practice because it is part of the day-to-day activities within the school, and it allows for professional development that teachers are learning through workshops to then be directly woven into the learning environment. And furthermore, as previously mentioned, with the growing number of new teachers in the district, these positions will allow for the additional layering of support in the district's new teacher induction process. So when we take a look at what we're calling curriculum coordinator or TOSA positions, teacher on special assignment, we'd be looking at four positions, two at the primary level and two at the intermediate level. The primary level supporting our UPK programs, which we have contracted with local, community-based organizations, up through grade two, and then the intermediate would support grades three up through sixth grade at our middle school. When we look at the distribution of job responsibilities, the position would be 40% curriculum. So as we keep describing our units of study, what do we want students to know and be able to do? So 40% of the job responsibility will be centered around designing that curriculum, designing that scope and sequence. 30% of the position will be around assessment, so measuring student outcomes. The student outcomes should be the same across the district. So again, examining that student output and then making adjustments to curriculum. And lastly, 30% will be instructional. So again, being able to be onsite, in classrooms, accessible to teachers, to assist them in their instructional best practices. We'd also be looking for the positions to be shared. So each individual would be assigned two buildings. And again, thinking back to consistency, that's very important, so that these individuals are getting into multiple buildings. So in terms of the funding for these positions, we have really looked closely at the COVID relief funding for the funding of these positions. So I share with you the distribution of federal grant funds. This was shared last year at our June board meeting, and what you see before you will be the annual expenditures for the federal grant funds. So again, for over the four years, the federal funding was about $2.3 million year-over-year. When we look at, with the exception of 24-25, which was approximately $400,000, which again, mostly was earmarked for the purpose of summer school in the 24-25 year. So when we take a look specifically at funding for summer school, which is the next slide, what we note is that when we looked, again, ahead, we had to plan well in advance with the federal funds, that we had earmarked approximately $380,000 for each of those years for the purpose of summer school. After looking at the first year, 21-22, last summer, we expended approximately $130,000 less than what we had projected. So we actually expended closer to $250,000. So with that, kind of looking at that expenditure and then thinking about subsequent years, what we had budgeted and then what we were actually going to expense is we're looking closer to a million dollars. So with that being said, then looking then to that, those carryover funds, approximately $520,000, to then fund these positions. And again, as part of the grant mandate, we must, about every six months, look at our COVID funding relief expenditures and make these adjustments. So certainly, as we've described here tonight, we absolutely see the need for positions like this. That can be, again, embedded in part of the school year, the entire school year. So with that, that will conclude our presentation. So at this time, we are happy to take any questions that the Board may have.
Great. Thank you, Kristin, and thank you, team. I was just, I had maybe a couple of thoughts as they were speaking. One was, back in Jan, I believe it was January, maybe it was February, the Board hosted a forum with members from the CTA, and this was one of the issues that came up periodically throughout the evening, was just frustrations with some curriculum support and how meaningful that could be. The other thing is just looking at the group presenting tonight. I know that when the Board has done school tours and classroom tours this year, we've been able to pop into some different classrooms. I know that we've been into a handful of the classrooms of folks that were presenting here tonight. This is a group of people that when you're in their classroom, it's like watching Tiger Woods hit off a tee or Michael Jordan play basketball. They're just so skilled. The challenge is, when you're starting your career, it just takes a lot of time and energy and work to get to that level. And so the conversation tonight is, how can we make that as easy as possible and pack support around young teachers so that kids are getting a really vibrant experience in schools? So certainly a lot to unpack and want to open it up to some questions and conversation from Board members.
Well, I'll echo what Dr. Frame said earlier. We've met on a number of occasions and had a great discussion at the forum and see the need to put some support here in this area. I think you did a wonderful job with the presentation, laying out the thoughts, identifying the gaps, and bringing forward the priorities. Certainly very supportive. Curious to know, maybe a little bit more if, I don't know, who might be best positioned, the context around splitting the resources between buildings and how, you know, I would imagine the curriculum design at the UPK or K to two level is certainly better bundled than a K to five, but just how you came at splitting the resources the way you did, and also that, you know, we have that added challenge of the middle school and grade six and how that would work into this. Not everybody at once.
Exactly. There's a lot of discussion in terms of the construct of the position. What we know is this, primary and intermediate are very, very different in terms of their roles, because there was discussion about the role being K through five, but we felt that it would be, that the positions are better suited when they are targeted, primary and intermediate. When we think about the curriculum training that we do specifically as it comes to reading and writing, we have historically had our training set up in a primary and an intermediate fashion. So that was the, that was the thinking behind that. In terms of kind of the splitting of the role, supporting four buildings is challenging. Being in four buildings, and again, looking at this work, knowing that it's going to be absolutely critical that these four people are able to build relationships with an entire faculty, with the building-level administration, to do that in four buildings is going to be, is going to be tricky, but we do feel that supporting two buildings is absolutely doable. This group is really going to be a team. They're going to have to work together, plan together, have a lot of time for collaboration. So there will be a lot of vertical discussion going on between these two primary and two intermediate personnel, and then they'll be able to disseminate, based on their conversations, out to the two buildings each of them support. There is, you know, discussion at this point also as to how we may even partner those individuals. So naturally, you'd have the two primary teachers and the two intermediate coaches, if you will, supporting one another, but also to potentially partner them. So you'd have a primary and an intermediate working together in those two buildings, so they're also supporting in that way as well.
So just to add this, so the curriculum coordination is certainly an important part of the position, but going back to the slide where I think there was a pie chart and it was broken up into three different areas. So a recognition that when teams of teachers are sitting together and they're working on a curriculum map, the different things that go into that, the questions that are asked, the resources that are used, the connections to standards, that's an important part of it. Second piece, though, is the coach, the instructional coaching that would happen. So, you know, for example, I am a secondary teacher by trade. I can sit in a room and do curriculum mapping with first, of the first-grade curriculum. It's a very different experience for me to work with first graders. And so I hope I could figure it out, but it would take a lot of support in terms of my pedagogical toolbox. And so just thinking about those roles, there are people that could push into classrooms where they're modeling, they're giving feedback, they're really working on helping people to develop the teaching toolkit that they need, not just the curriculum alignment. And we haven't talked a ton about the assessment work. So just thinking about grades three through eight assessments, local assessments that are given here in district, what we want to be able to do is sort of look across grade level and across building to see where are kids really hitting it out of the park and to be able to figure out what's, what are the instructional strategies being used, what's the curriculum look like in those areas, and then to find those gap areas where we're not performing, where other areas' schools are, or if you look at a teacher or a building that's a little bit lower, how can we share and learn from each other? So the curriculum piece is really important, but so is the instructional coaching and so is the assessment work.
So I just want to, I think this is a great idea. I know this is, before the forums we had, teachers approached me with the issues that have come up, and I think breaking it up is a great idea. The budgeting, that gets us through 2025, right?
Correct.
And these, I would assume, positions that we don't want to lose after that.
Yeah.
Because we'll just fall back to the way we were.
Sure.
And have disjointed, you know, between the buildings. So I think as a Board, we need to consider that, you know, we get through 2025, which is a number of years at this point, but we have to look forward into keeping those positions because I think they're necessary.
Certainly, and something that certainly Mr. Michelle and myself and Dr. Grupka have been talking about and thinking about in terms of our sustainability plan, that that's something, you know, looking ahead, looking at potential retirement or attrition, that how can we maintain positions like this is certainly something we're discussing as well.
Because that federal money is dedicated to learning, recovering from learning, missed learning, right?
Correct.
Which is what we're using it for, but I certainly don't think the position should go away once we end the federal money.
Correct. We also do have our federal title grant funds to look to as well. So again, we have a little bit of time.
Okay.
To plan ahead for that. So the positions, as I mentioned, could be maintained or can be maintained.
So I just, hi Kristin, thank you ladies for your presentation. So if I'm getting the gist of it, we're going to take some master teachers, and they're going to be teachers on special assignment to kind of satellite and work in these other schools and help our rookie teachers, who we want to keep in the profession, especially in these days, and have that support around them. And we're looking at for, at three years right now till 25.
That's correct. So we're looking, we're projecting out through 2025.
Okay. So I'm just curious, is the plan for your TOSA's to head back into the classroom or rotate, or we're just going to see how it's going to go for a while and just assess it as we go?
Yeah, they're annual appointments, but, you know, the expectation at this point would be that those four positions, that the people we identify for those four positions would be in those positions for the next three years. That is correct.
Well, speaking the same language is very important.
It's incredibly important.
Thank you very much.
I would agree. Thank you.
The funding piece is really important, and we know that the last time that we met, it was right around the passage of the budget and the school budget elections. So I think the recommendation, or the idea that's being brought tonight is saying, can we take advantage of a federal funding stream to speed up the pace with which we could establish a program here in Clarence with a plan for supporting it long-term? So if this group had come in tonight and said, you know what, we saw that you got a budget passed in May, can we build this program up in Clarence? The answer would be no, because it wasn't built into our spending plan. The proposal that we have here tonight is leveraging a very unique opportunity that we have in the short term while prioritizing this and building it into budgets long-term. So that would be the sort of capitalizing and taking advantage of not spending the level of resource that we thought would be needed in some other areas with the federal funds.
I think the one other thing that you raised, which every individual up here is well aware of, is that substitutes and getting qualified substitutes when needed is a challenge that we're having, every district is having. So I think, you know, as a Board, as an administrative staff here, we need to think long and hard about what we might be able to do creatively to ensure that we can at least ensure that that is not a hindrance to the success of this program.
And we've thought about that, and we did talk a little bit about that as well. Just to give you context, prior to the pandemic, we were bringing teacher leaders together for each subject area at the elementary level. So that consisted of 28 meetings, three times a year, so 28 half-days where we were pulling teachers out of the classroom. That is just, that would not have been possible over the last couple of years. When we're thinking about 16 teachers at a grade level, the thought would be, by way of these coaches, by way of these positions, we then bring the learning to the schools. So then the coaches could sit in on professional learning community meetings, and then again, speaking that same language across the four buildings. We recognize that though it was working and we were moving in the, in the right direction, the challenge with teacher coverage, it's just, it's too great at this point. We have to do things differently.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of such planful collaboration. If we leave it to wishful thinking, it will never happen.
That's right.
And we certainly do know that this is a priority area for us. It's come through loud and clear.
You know, it's interesting, Dawn, I was thinking about this earlier. You were at the Family Support Center meeting over at the library, and I remember talking with you and Board members earlier in the year at the CTA forum and saying that, that was an event that helped us spur the creation of the Family Support Center, listening to a need that existed in the community and finding a way to make it happen. I was just thinking about that tonight as they were presenting, being so proud of the work that's going on here in district, saying, I think this is a next area for us where we can get more purposeful about the way that we're developing, aligning curriculum, supporting new teachers in particular. But I would also say this, it's easy to blink and you wake up and you're 20 years into your career, and there's curriculum that needs revising.
That's right.
Or there are new instructional strategies and having people, not a specialist that you have to fly in from California, or not a snappy conference in Nashville, but somebody down the hall who's doing incredible work for kids, that that support is built in because it's important to build trust so that people can be in a classroom giving feedback, they're comfortable modeling things, and it doesn't happen when you find an expert. It happens when you can, you can really invest in the local talent that you have and really build those relationships. I guess the one thing I might ask for tonight, and would just appreciate kind of clarity and honesty with where our trustees are, this is something where if you said, we like it, you know, we know that the financing plan works for the next couple of years, it doesn't work in the long term, so we're going to have to build this into our budget development in the future, but, you know, full speed ahead, we'd like to see roles and responsibilities, we'd like to see postings, but we're supportive of it. So maybe that's option one. If option two is, we like it, but we'd like to get a little bit more information, have some questions on if it's financing or roles and responsibilities, so it's sort of, we like it, but we'd like a little more info. And the third one is, I'm just not comfortable with it and wouldn't support it right now. So it's not an official motion, but I guess just looking for a little bit of direction as we bring our time to a close tonight in this particular area.
I mean, I'll just speak tonight. I'm comfortable with it, and I'm comfortable with it. I mean, I think we have the money for the next three years, and it's a need, it's been brought to us a number of times. So I think, my opinion is we move forward with it.
I like it. We're bringing the, we're pushing the in-service into the classrooms, and we're not going to be pulling the teachers out. We don't have the substitutes anyway, and I think this is great hearing from our colleagues.
I'm in full support of it. I feel like we should go forward with it.
I agree, we should go forward. I've always wanted more information. I'd like to see some, some rollout information, but it'd be great to have it up and running as soon as possible.
Sounds good. Well, again, I appreciate you prioritizing this, and again, it's on our strategic plan, and that's something that we want to make sure we're putting resources behind. I wonder if a next step, Kristin, for you and your team would be to work on developing what a job posting with roles and responsibilities would look like? So the posting for the coordination positions would have to go up the TOSA positions. So the, the posting for the, the coordination positions would have to go up, the TOSSA positions, and then the hiring to replace those folks.
Yes.
Would also have to go up. So maybe that's a next step, is to have Kristen and her team work on that, and then to share it with you before getting it posted.
I can get that to you first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay. Well, it looks like you had a long night in front of you.
Kristen, is it already done? Yes, it is. I could get it to you after this meeting.
Well, just one, maybe one last thing, and that just is a very genuine thank you for the team that is with you tonight, not just for your work on this project, but for your work in your own classrooms, but then work with colleagues. Again, you're not going to find a group of more respected practitioners here in the district. So a quick round of applause. And then we'll also do, it is a big day tomorrow. There are Flag Day celebrations and end of year activities, so if we can excuse you so that you are on the top of your game tomorrow with kids, why don't we do that?
Thank you.
All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. So as we transition from one report to the next, and Kristen, I wonder if you might be willing to help Patty switch over the PowerPoint slides? So talking about important topics this evening, the first was really curriculum work. The second is to talk about safety and security here in the district. We know that here in Western New York, but as well as around the country, it's been a really heartbreaking month as we think about the violence here in Buffalo, as a group of people were, were targeted and murdered in TOPS, close to home. And then we also look at a horrific school shooting in Uvalde, Texas. And as humans, I know that we are all sending thoughts and prayers. I know that we are also concerned for our safety and security here in the district and want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to keep our kids and our faculty and staff safe, because we know that when parents put their kids on the bus in the morning, they're trusting that they will be in our good care until the end of the school day. And so what we thought would be appropriate this evening is to spend a little bit of time detailing safety and security measures that have been put in place here in Clarence. Dr. Grupka is going to lead the majority of our presentation tonight. We're thrilled to have Dave Bissonette with us as well. I, I believe that everyone on the board knows Dave. Dave's an emergency manager for the town of Clarence, has been a partner here in the school district for years and years. And Dave, just wanted to say how much I appreciated your meeting a couple of weeks ago after the shootings, just to talk about existing programs and measures here in Clarence, but then what we should be thinking about as we move forward. I also would like to thank local law enforcement. We had our two SROs, Mike and Dave, met this afternoon with myself, and then three leaders and the New York State Troopers. And just a really important conversation, appreciated all of their support and their increased presence over the past couple of weeks. So the Erie County Sheriff's Office, the New York State Troopers. And it was just crystal clear today how much they are focused on keeping us safe. And so if you have been around at arrival dismissal or driven by the school buildings over the past couple of weeks, you likely will have seen law enforcement vehicles just providing an increased presence. And they've been asked to stop into games and concerts and dances and those sorts of things. So just a recognition that when we talk about school safety, it really is a collective responsibility, and appreciate not just the work of our faculty and staff here in district, but also our outside partners. So again, Dr. Grupka is going to lead the presentation this evening. It's going to focus on things that have been developed here in the district, are in place, things that are in the works, and then some things that we should be thinking about as we move forward. So thank you, Patty.
So, thank you. So we had literally had our safety meeting on the day of the shooting in Uvalde. So it was really kind of a interesting and difficult meeting because we had to talk about the things that we know we should be doing and the fact that safety is everyone's responsibility. So I did charge the building, you've got to harden all of your entrances, not just the front entrances. We're schools, and there has to be this wonderful balance between safety and nurturing, and how, how do we make sure that we treat our kids with a softness and kindness, but really make sure that we're safe at the same time? This, this timing pairs perfectly with our district safety plan, which is, you know, now open to public comment. It is posted on our website. This really hasn't changed. The district safety plan was established, I think, through SAVE legislation in about 2000. The district safety plan is a public-facing document. There are specific requirements in it. It must be reviewed annually. Included in it is our code of conduct, several other measures, there's, now there's a pandemic plan. But in addition, it's all of what happens during any emergency. And you know, with all the violence going on, we tend to focus on that because it's current and it's what hap, what's happening now, and it's extremely emotional. But that is only one event that can happen at a school, and we have to remember that. So this is online, it's posted, you're free to take a look at it, any of the public can take a look at it. It's open for 30 days of comment. But it is very prescriptive in what's required. It's something that BOSI's works with all of the local component districts on, and if you look, they'll all look somewhat similar. Our individual building safety plans are inward-facing documents. Those are not available to the public. Those documents actually talk a little bit more about what would happen in a particular building if something happened in that building. They include evacuation plans, points of contact, shut off for all of your emergency equipment. It's things that you would want, not want the public to know if something did happen. Required safety measures also included in here. Annually, there's 12 emergency drills that must be completed every year. Eight have to be fire drills, four have to be lockdown drills, and eight of them have to be done before December. In addition, if you have summer school, there must be two summer school drills. Prescriptive and what must be in every one of our plans is a shelter in place plan, hold in place, evacuate, lockout, and sheltering off-site. This language is specific to all of New York State. And the reason we have these drills is because we use the same language, just like Kristen said, we have to use the same language in curriculum, we have to use it in safety. So the police will use this language, the emergency people will use this language. If you go back 12 years ago, maybe, we were talking about code red and code orange, and people were making up their own codes. We really need to all use the same language when we're having an emergency, and that is what is in here. So we went through our safety meetings, we've been having them regularly, we just had one a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about some of the things we do and some of the things we're doing moving forward. We have secured entrances with door monitors in all of our buildings. The middle school Clarence Center and Ledger are all complete. The high school Sheridan Hill and Harris Hill should be completed by the end of the summer. What that means is they're not just secure, but they have double-pane glass, so people will have to be buzzed in to the entrance, and they can be held in place and locked in place. We looked at some of our entrances after our meetings. I had some conversations with our principals and some of our staff about field division. So when someone's approaching the window, are we really seeing them when we buzz them in? So we did add some cameras, we added some mirrors, so now everybody can see who's coming in. If a monitor is not available on that day, know that our office staff also have access to those cameras. So if they're being buzzed in at the office, they can see who's coming in as well. We have a computer-based visitor system called TPASS. So if a visitor comes in the front door, you give them your license, they run your license. If you are on any criminal registry, that will come up. It's not just for criminals, it is for sometimes family members who don't have access to their children. Those notes will all come up, they have access to our, to our school, so they can see who's coming in and who should be there and who should not. We have two resource officers. They have been at all of the buildings. Recently, we've asked that they spend a little bit more time at our elementaries. I met with Mr. Ballow this week, and in addition to having him at the elementaries, we've asked, starting next year, that they do rotations at the secondaries and elementaries to make sure they're there at drop-off in the morning and pick up at the end of the day, because those are times when people are really coming in and out. And I think it would really make everyone feel a little bit better to see them during those times. Right now, we have some increased presence from the Erie County Sheriff's and New York State Troopers. They've offered their time to come in and kind of sit at our buildings and be at the buildings during some of our busy times and when, when they have some free time. And there's emergency guide procedures located in every classroom. So we talked about the language that we use here and what should happen in each of those. Every classroom in a common place has a sheet of paper that goes over what each of those things are and what to do if somebody calls any one of those events. So more importantly, if a substitute comes in, a substitute will also have access to All doors and classrooms in each building are numbered, the windows will be numbered, hopefully by tomorrow, at all of our buildings. Intruder locks are installed in classrooms throughout the buildings, which a door, which allows the doors to be locked from the inside. Increased security video, increased security video equipment to monitor all schools. We have over 300 cameras, and like I said, we just added a few more. Video is viewed as necessary with law enforcement, but we do have cameras at many, many, many locations. We have emergency backpack kits, and I don't know, Dave, if you want to talk about those? Because I'm not as familiar with those. But I know that that's something that we've had quite a bit of training, and Dave's been out to our building. We've been working with Homeland Security and law enforcement to update safety drills and work on any vulnerabilities or problems. In addition, we're also providing additional mental health supports for our students, families, and community. So we just added additional psychologists and counselors and social workers. We have mental health support, comprehensive mental health services, self, health, self, safety, and wellness programs. I just met with our wellness committee, and we talked about a really, a different view of what wellness is. In the past, we talked a lot about school lunch. Now we're talking about mental health, wellness, really some different programs, and we're actually going to do some, we've started some goal setting. We have a formal threat assessment process and protocols. We know how to respond and how to intervene, and we've done some training, and we'll continue to do training. We do have annual safety training through BOSI's, and some of it is online. So every year, teachers are trained and retrained, and it's part of what we do annually. Our family support center can assist in linking community members, families, and students with resources they need. I know I've even had communications with them about some of our families and getting the support and help that they need. We've adopted a variety of safety and security policies, procedures, code of conduct that is enforced fairly and consistently across campus, and that's something that is reviewed And then additional long and short-term actions that we're taking. So, you know, return to pre-COVID has been, it's been a challenge, because during COVID, we kind of, we weren't even allowed to do the shelter in place, right? Because you couldn't have people that close together. So getting back to the drills and doing them as they were intended to be has been a slow start, and that was one of the conversations we had at this, at this last safety meeting. We can now be together in that way, we really have to start doing these with fidelity. We have an incident command center, we have go-kits for all faculty and staff, we have a, a process for active shooter preparedness and response. We've done live drills before. You know, I think Dave has actually come in and done a security assessment for each building. This is really where Dave has kind of helped add some input, and he's been here a bit longer than I.
Man.
Yeah, I would love it.
So let me kind of pick up where the doctor has left off here in preparation and preparedness. And before I get into that piece of old business, I want to thank this board for 20-plus years of cooperation and commitment on behalf of the emergency management in the town of Clarence. That's me. I've been doing emergency management for this town for more than 30 years now. I graduated from this school. Clarence is personal to me. In the last 20-plus years, I've been very proud to be the emergency management consultant for the school district, many of you know that. For those of you that are a little newer, we've come a long way in the school district when it comes to preparing for disaster, emergencies of all kinds. The society that we live in now has continued to throw us curveball after curveball, most recently, COVID. How do you develop emergency plans when you can't bring people together in close proximity, right? Little things like that. So we've had lots of challenges over the years. Some of the things that the doctor has laid out here have been coming along for many years. I can't say enough about the capital expenses that this district has made for human safety in our schools, both the students and the faculty. The security vestibules that are coming along nicely are a critical piece of controlling our visitor population from coming and going from our buildings and giving us that security barrier we need to, to proof our people as they come and go. I think for me, what keeps me up at night today is getting the school district back to basics prior to COVID. And I'm just telling you like I see it. We've got some bad habits that have come back into our organization because of COVID, because of the, the need to get through our day. Some of the things we put here in the last couple of slides would address that, particularly the faculty retraining. I see a lot of new faces in our schools. I come to your safety committee meetings in every building, including the high school. I've been doing your emergency management preparedness training for the senior faculty as well as the school faculties for quite a few years. Those go-kits are a big part of the consistent message that the school gives first responders when they arrive on location, and those are the things I would like to see us kind of get back to basics on. And we've got a lot of good things going for us in this district, and my colleagues and other jurisdictions are not as fortunate. So I'm very proud of where we've come from. I'd like to, I'd like to take us to the next level. And Dr. Frame, thank you for inviting me here tonight. I think this is the first time in 20-plus years I've had a chance to talk to this, this board, so I appreciate that opportunity. I'm not going to go into each one of those details, I think there was one more slide. There are some suggestions there that the doctors and I have gone over here in a, in a recent meeting, something to consider that would take us to the next level in a few areas, there are options, there are opportunities, as well as the retraining that I mentioned before.
So, so we have rolled out the rapid responder to our administrators, that was done at the last safety meeting. So we'd like our administrator to try it first. So it's an app that you put on your phone, and it allows you to click a button for a variety of incidents. So you can click on whatever your incident is, or you can hit a button and say this is a drill. And when you hit that button, whether it's a drill or not a drill, it goes immediately to the local law enforcement and emergency responders, so they can respond instantly. That application, much like this, the building-level safety plan has the maps, it has your numbered entrances, it has all of your emergency shut-off nails. So it is a comprehensive package that allows somebody to have, allows law enforcement to have access to all of your information immediately. The other thing we started doing is we started investigating a tip line, a confidential tip line. So Mr. Brenneri and I, we're getting some emails from different companies, and I've asked them, did we sit down and look at some of these? Because some are comprehensive and involved, you know, not involved, you know, two-way responses, some are one-way responses. But we really do need to institute that, our goal is to have that placed by some of our folks.
One other comment I would make, that we've held up this plan here, which is substantial. If we don't exercise it, it won't, it won't work, okay? And I think everybody would support, lots of documentation, but no action creates more disaster for me and for us, okay? And I, and I don't want to sound like a Debbie Downer on that, but the fact that it matters, we need to exercise these plans, that's a disruption to our day. They take planning, it takes effort. I think it was 2015, we did a large-scale lockdown of the high school, some of you will remember. We included 13 different agencies. The public was well-informed. We exercised a large portion of the aggressive deadly behavior program that this area knows and lives now every day. Not suggesting we do that this year or even next year, but planning for drills of that magnitude is something we need to do.
We did not anticipate in a drill setting, so there was a great deal of value that came out of that, and like you, I'm not necessarily suggesting it's time for one tomorrow. And we did wrestle at the time I was on the board with whether we'd do it during the day with students in the building, and we went back and forth, we wound up doing it with students in the building at the high school. They were well aware it was coming and so forth. But it presents a key learning for both the district and law enforcement to ensure that in the unfortunate event that that, something like that happens, we're prepared. So I'd be open to discussions on what might be a logical next step at whatever scale, just to make sure that we further the partnership. just to make sure that we further the partnership with law enforcement.
Absolutely. I might add to that, that this board at that time had a lot of faith in Dr. Hicks and Rick Mancuso and myself to conduct a drill of that magnitude without embarrassing the district, without causing pain and injury, which is not uncommon in large-scale drills. That can happen. We are not in a standard operating procedure on those days. But there was enough commitment there, law enforcement, the fire service, EMS. We learned a lot there. That was one of the biggest learning events in those years at that time, to be able to go through that. And I strongly urge us to continue to drill like we live. It doesn't do us any good to drill in a building that's empty. We need to have the dynamics of students that are not cooperating, students that are cooperating, and timing. All that makes a lot of difference, and we have changed the way we do business as a result of that drill, and particularly the sheriff's department response. Thank you for that trust.
You know, I just wanted to say, Dave, we're meeting with the state troopers today, and they've been going school to school, meeting with members of administrative teams. And they said they're really seeing a spectrum. Is that on one side of the spectrum, there are school districts where hope is the strategy. They're just hoping that something doesn't happen in the district. And on the other end, there are school districts that have invested in hardening the buildings. They have school resource officer programs. They have professional development, they're training, they have plans, they're drilling, all those different things. And, you know, during the course of our conversation, just appreciative of the fact that the teams that you've been a part of have invested in those things long-term in Clarence. And, you know, in our conversation, you really emphasized the importance of back to basics, and just the reality that safety for the last two years has meant something very different. And so, for example, to be able to do a lockdown drill, you couldn't get kids close enough because you have to have the physical distancing, is that there was a period of time where it was open doors and open windows so that you can get as much fresh air in as possible. And so certainly, that's very different when you're looking at active shooters as a primary threat or safety concern. And also squaring it with the reality that we're schools. And so every day, there is a mass event when we bring, in our case, 4,200 kids to school districts for really rich and warm and exciting learning experiences, but we're bringing a lot of people to the same place. And at one point in the presentation, there was also a comment about what's palatable to the community and what meets local needs. So we knew that during the pandemic, the safest thing in many cases was to not have visitor or parent access, to limit the number of people here. And we also know how difficult that was for our families in the community. And so one of the best things that's happened over the past couple months is that we have been able to open up our facilities so that parents can be a part of their children's learning. And so we need to make sure that we're as safe as can be, but we also need to recognize that we're a school. And so we need, our facilities need to be open for school events and for community events, and that parents need to be a part of their sons' and daughters' learning experiences. And so finding a way to make sure that we're meeting both needs. But again, appreciate your partnership, appreciate the way that you framed some of the challenges in front of us, and I'm just thankful that you and folks in Clarence have positioned us really as well as you could be at a challenging point in time.
I appreciate you listening, and I'm looking forward to another 20 years worth of relationship.
Thank you, thank you.
Great, thank you, Dave. Appreciate you being with us.
Matt, we have two pages of short and long-term action items. Is it possible to, at some point, put dates to these so we can make sure we are moving along on this?
Yeah, absolutely. So maybe just to speak on that a little bit, is that we had met with Dave just over a week ago, and that, you know, one of the points that I really appreciated, Dave, is that you had talked about, when there is a tragedy, it's very normal for emotions to be heightened, and we're all thinking about safety and security, and we want to do everything that we can to make people safe, keep people safe. But you also talked about that that's oftentimes the worst point to do really thoughtful work in terms of short and long-term planning. And one of the things that we had talked about was putting especially our building principals together at the beginning of the summer with Dave, local members of law enforcement, so that we can do some real priority setting and start to do things like put dates to the action items that we've listed, but saying the first part of the summer probably is the time for that really thoughtful work that we'll have to go into some of that planning.
The tip line is scheduled for the September opening of school?
That's our goal.
Super.
And that's a pretty, and that's a very doable goal, to make sure that not only is it established, but it also is communicated very clearly so that people can access that information.
The only other thing, on the website, it's actually referred to as the emergency plan, not the safety plan, so just so that if you're looking for it.
All right, Mr. Fuge, that is it for superintendent reports this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Frame. All right. Next up is, on our agenda is the public comments session. We did have three individuals sign up to speak to the board tonight. We have one microphone in the one aisleway. Just before calling the names, just as a reminder, for those who may not have spoken to the board before, we just ask that you refrain from mentioning students or faculty by name. If there's a certain personnel matter you'd like to address, we'll certainly be happy to take it offline. And be respectful to address your comments to the full board, not individual board members, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, to be respectful of all those in attendance tonight. So first of the three individuals, I'll read the three names just so you have, in your mind, you can cue yourselves up. The first will be Lisa Rot, the second will be Chris Janiky Howe, and the third will be Amanda Zsorjuski. So Mrs. Rot, welcome to the, welcome to come up to the microphone.
Hi, everybody. It's been a while since I'd spoken at a board meeting, because I got pretty lambasted last time I did one online, and then they put my face online, which I wasn't really positive feeling about that, because I, even if you go to my husband's Facebook page, I'm not on there, because I do not want to be online. I'm a former teacher, and I did not join Facebook for the very reason that I am a former teacher. So anyways, but I thought, you know what, I don't want to be a wimp. So I wanted to, and this is a positive thing, that I really want to say thank you to the board. My husband and I both wrote this together. We both really appreciate that you come out weekly or monthly for this rather thankless job that you don't get paid for. I thought about doing this, but I have to be honest with you, I think I have relatively thin skin, so I don't think I could listen to somebody else with varying different opinions that I have and not want to leap across the table and say, "What are you kidding me?" So I really do thank you for your commitment to our kids and to our, to my kids, and I thank you for your commitment to the teachers in the district to support them, because they are doing a great job. I thank you for your commitment to bringing the children back to normalcy, that there is a, you know, a feeling of like, yes, we're post-COVID. It just, I think it's a lot more positive. I have, my one son is, has some anxiety that's a result of this whole thing, and so we're working through it with him, but that his teacher is just phenomenal. We went through this election, and I want to say that I was very appreciative of the, it wasn't a debate, really, it was basically an information session by all the candidates. I think that everyone treated one another with respect, and I think that was a very positive thing. I was impressed, because I, I have to be honest, I thought there would be a little bit of fire and a little bit of snarking, and it didn't really appear. I'm always horned for fire and snarking, but, you know, I try to behave myself, not very much, actually. So I thought it was very good, and I was a little part of the, you know, helping, supporting people and, but I, you know, I'm committed to like supporting the board and the people that were elected. I, I, let me see, I wanted to say that I will definitely do my part, hopefully, in promoting what is best for my own children and what I think is best for our community. And I think that hopefully that will be, trying to be a little bit more encouraging of other parents and other people in the district to come out and come to the meetings. I think that's, I think so many times we don't. And I haven't, honestly, before this past year and a half, I sat home for 15 years and didn't really know when the board meetings were going on. So I will continue to come out, and to be honest with you, I'm going to continue to hold you accountable. I'm going to be looking through my children's curriculum. I'm going to be reading through the board minutes and the agendas, and I have to be honest, it kills me to sit in the audience, like I couldn't contain myself with the one, like, when are we going to know the boy's name or the kid's name? You know, it's hard for me to not like ask questions of the people presenting, because I, I love this, it's interesting to me. And so anyways, I just really want to thank you. I want to thank you for all you do, and I think you're, you know, doing a good job. I'm going to continue to pray for you, that you make good and wholesome decisions for our kids, they're little kids, even if they're 16, 17-year-olds, they have got like, you know, ways to go sometimes with maturing, so we're hoping that they have that opportunity to do that. And it's been, it's been a very positive thing. So good job, and keep it up, and I will be seeing you often, so that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Rot. Chris Janiky Howe?
I'm coming to you today, or tonight, as a parent of a 13-year-old that attends the school here, and a very rambunctious four-year-old who is going to be joining the pre-K program next year. So needless to say, I will be around for many, many years. I work in a school, I'm a school social worker, I am on my district's safety committee, and when I go to work every day, I treat all 500 children that attend that middle school as if they were my own. Last week, I came here to pick up my son from just a normal, traditional day. I get to the parking lot at 3:05, yes, I'm one of those parents that sits for a half an hour and waits for the school day to end. I'm glad I did, because if I didn't, you wouldn't know about this, and it would continue to keep happening. And we possibly could become the next Uvalde. Wednesday, from 3:05 until 3:35, six doors were left unlocked, free for any adult, child, or person to enter this building. 3:05 to 3:35. This was not an after-school event. This was during the school day when kids are in session, when all parents are under the impression that all doors are locked and secured. Neighbor was getting out of the van, walking in. Thankfully, I was like, "What's going on? This is different." And I stopped them. "What's happening? Do we have to go inside and pick up our kids? Did I miss something on my way here? Oh, no, it's an award ceremony for eighth grade." "Okay, that's fantastic. Why are you entering the building?" Just kept going. People just kept entering and entering. I called the main office. I'm told, rather dismissively, there's a security officer indoors, standing inside, and they're watching the doors. One security officer for six points of entrance that are unlocked. Not a single SRO was outside, out front, checking IDs, checking to make sure that these individuals are allowed to be in this building, or if these individuals can be near After I made that phone call, the security officer stepped outside for nearly 30 seconds, at which point, please, and I would ask you, and I would encourage you and beg you to go back to the cameras and watch, to where the security officer held the door open for a complete stranger during the school day. The bell had not rung. I know some of you might think I'm making a big deal, but I don't want to see my son on a tribute on a news station. Someone approved six doors being unlocked during the school day, weeks after yet again another school shooting. Today, five miles from here, an individual is arrested in Chiktawaga for having countless of assault rifles, ammunition, these gun kits that you could put together a gun in 30 minutes. Clarence, you need to do better. These safety plans are great, we're talking about them, it's great we're talking about them, but it doesn't matter, because six doors were left unlocked. I want to work with you, I really do, and I know it sounds like I'm coming at you, but I'm not this, I had no intention of being emotional, but these are children. Trust me, you want me talking now, rather than news stations lined up because something happened? Because let's be real, it's a matter of when and not if. That's the society we live in, where we value weapons over children. A colleague of mine shared this, who's also on our safety committee, and it makes complete and perfect sense. If you want safety, you can't have convenience. They don't come hand in hand. And I'm also tired of hearing, "That's how it's been done before." Because that's not an excuse. Please, do better. Because last Wednesday, you let every student down in this building, you let every faculty member down in this building. But at the end of the day, what you all need to find out is who approved allowing six doors to be unlocked for one security officer to manage inside? And what I was told, the security guard, they're inside. So is the security guard at Tops. So is security guards at schools. Once they're in that first set of doors, they're in. Do better.
Thank you, sir. Really appreciate you coming out and sharing your concerns, and we do hear you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here on behalf of my wife, Amanda, and I. I had some email conversations today with the building administration regarding Regents exams, so I have a statement here tonight. So we're here tonight to share our disappointment in the district for upholding the outdated policy of counting Regents exam grades as 20% of a student's final grade. This especially pertains to low students such as my daughter, taking AP or college-level courses. In a memo to districts dated May 16, 22, Education Commissioner Betty Rosa advised districts that due to the continued impact of COVID-19 on learning and teaching conditions, the Department of Ed does not require or recommend that schools use Regents examination grades as part of the calculation of a student's final average. Clarence has stated that they're going to continue the tradition of counting Regents exams as 20% of a student's final grade to, quote, "create a learning environment that is as close to normal as possible," end quote. Due to the pandemic, over half of the students taking the Regents exams this year have never even taken a Regents exam ever. So how is that normal? How is it normal that a student taking an AP or a college-level course for a class they've never even taken have to take that exam and have it count for 20% of their final grade? How is it normal to have a building administrator advocate for the final exam to be counted as 20% because it'll help students that are at risk for failing or with poor grades? Yet, at the same time, like as in my daughter's situation, it will hurt and lower the grade of a student who is performing well. How is it normal that a three-hour exam worth 20% of a final grade is the equivalent of 10 weeks' worth of schoolwork and learning? Districts such as Williamsville, Lancaster, Star Point, Orchard Park, West Seneca, and others, both regionally and across the state, have already listened to the recommendation of the New York State Education Department. They've recognized the toll reintroducing Regents exams as taking on students' mental health and have adopted the policy recommended by the State Ed Department. In Clarence, shouldn't we be looking to do what's best for all students, low, medium, and high achieving? So the bottom line, count the Regents exam as part of a final grade if it helps a student, but don't count it if it doesn't. if it helps a student, but don't count it if it doesn't. It still isn't too late to make that change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming out and sharing that.
Mike, I know that you've received a number of emails on the Regents waiting topic. I wonder if you would give me a moment just to share a couple of thoughts. One, I just, in a very genuine way, want to thank you for coming out and sharing your thoughts tonight. We've heard from maybe a half dozen people that have had very similar comments. And it is, it has been adopted, the changes in other districts. And so, respect their decision, respect completely where you're coming from, and make compelling arguments. Here are a couple additional points to consider. One, I do think that they are valuable arguments and valid arguments to be made. Our high school principal, Ken Smith, and the high school department chairs did meet to review the issue. Their feeling was that based on what they're seeing with student learning levels and understanding is that they were comfortable continuing the practice that we have had for a number of years. I don't work directly with students in my role, for the most part, and so trust our building-level leaders in terms of their recommendation for this year. So it was reviewed by our high school administration and our faculty leaders at the secondary level. I think the point from the State Education Department is an important one. I also think it's important to share that that is not a changed position for the State Education Department. Since the inception of Regents exams, they have said that they are not intended to be factored into final exams. That's been a common practice in most public schools in New York State. So they had connected it to COVID and pandemic learning loss, which makes complete sense. I would just note that they've had that position for a number of years. And that public schools in New York State have had very different COVID experiences. We have tried to give our kids as normal an experience this year as possible. And I think that's one of the reasons that our faculty leaders are comfortable with the system that we've had. I will just share at a personal level, I know that the board adopts policy regarding evaluation placement promotion systems, and that the particulars are developed at the building level. I guess for me personally, I recognize that there are some things that are off with that practice. I'm not sure, in order to address that, what the appropriate recommendation would be. So, for example, there are districts that continue to wait at a 20%. That is fairly typical. There are districts that have reduced the waiting to 5% or 10%. There are districts that have decoupled the Regents score from overall GP or overall course averages entirely. Some that have chosen to only use it if it helps a student. Those are all reasonable approaches. I'm not sure which one makes sense. They all have different drivers behind them. And as we sit here in the middle of June with kids coming in to take Regents exams, it's not too late, but it is, it is very close to the end of the year. I do think it's something that would warrant a bit of additional thought and consideration, just not at this particular point in time. So I do support our high school faculty and Ken Smith's recommendation that we keep the practice in place this current year. And again, I say that respecting other opinions, understanding them, but wanted to share some thoughts as well.
Thank you, Dr. Frame, for the added commentary. With that, I'd like to move forward in the agenda. Next up is the finance section. Dr. Gropko, we have, I think, a record finance agenda tonight.
So attached to you, you will find the financial reports and the check warrant. I don't think there's anything really remarkable about any of those reports. I will say that our auditor actually went out sick, so I do not have the claims audit report this month. But you will see two of them next month. They do have somebody filling in for her. I'm requesting approval of cooperative bidding resolution. So that allows us to use, there are cooperative organizations that actually put multiple items out to bid, and we can use their bid results instead of going out to bid ourselves. It saves us money in that we don't have to pay for the advertising. Quite frankly, they generally get better numbers because there's power inside. But it allows us to purchase without, outside of the bidding, well, inside the bidding process without doing the bidding ourselves. I'm asking for authority for payment of bills. This is something we do annually. Budget transfers as well. Those are, those are requests that are done annually. And acceptance for bids. We put out a musical instrument bid that was attached to your packet, tire bid, and security service bid. So we are taking all of the lowest bidders with the musical bids. We do not accept any substitutions because we're very particular about the instruments we buy. I'm asking for municipal cooperation agreement. And this is to do some investment through Night Class, which is a company that invests in government funds. So if you look at our board policy, there's only a few areas that we are allowed to invest in. Night Class does municipal cooperation agreements for bids, and I like them because they're very liquid. So we will probably look at a blend of bonds and then some purchases through Night Class. We do have some current fund balance and reserves. And while that money sits, there's no reason we shouldn't be taking advantage of at least the newer rates that are coming out. I've asked for a resolution to create employees' retirement contribution fund, reserve fund, and also to fund it for this year. Also, for a TRS retirement fund and to fund it, as well as a liability reserve. So I'm asking for these reserves. They really make sense for our district. And this is a bit in response to our audit, our New York State audit. They have suggested that we need to create some reserves in appropriate places. When I look at what we have on the table right now, we do have a victim's, a child victims' claim case pending. So I think that a liability reserve makes sense. ERS and TRS make sense. That allows us to put some money away for rainy days should the rates increase over 2%. I would also recommend later in the year, during vote season, that we look at a repair reserve and a capital reserve. But those actually would have to go to the public for vote.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Do you have authority to transfer between budget transfers? Because that's between, like, different parts of the budget, right?
It's, well, so generally, yes. There's, it's between different parts of the budget, but there are rules that you have to follow. So, for example, you can't transfer payroll codes into supply codes, and you can't transfer anything into equipment without board approval.
Is there a cap before there's board approval on that?
There has never been a cap here.
So is a cap, and your experience consistent in other districts?
I think it's different everywhere.
So along those lines, and you haven't touched on it yet, but we have an informational item, which is the reorganization meeting?
Yes.
That speaks to more of some of the general approvals that we give at the first meeting of the school year. I believe in that draft language, it's still what it might have been the year prior. Would that be where we would want to consider inserting some dollar thresholds?
I would be okay with that. I mean, if that's, if that's what you, you know. What I can do is make some recommendations for the next meeting on some dollar thresholds. Realistically, anything over $30,000 would have to either go out to bid or be on government bid. So that might be an amount that you'd want to think about. But I can have those numbers to you for the next meeting. So in addition, are we okay with that, if I just make recommendations for the next meeting?
Okay.
In addition, I will ask that you approve the vote results and a resolution to issue borrowing for our bus purchases. The purchasing of buses and the borrowing was approved during the vote process. And I think that's it. Oh, the reorganization meeting, to approve the date of the reorg meeting, and that would be for July 11 here at the odd middle school auditorium.
So, Mike, do we hold item five for now?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Patty, item five is to close out this year. And then the budget transfers, authority for budget transfers, and F5. That's to allow you to close the books?
Yes.
For this calendar year?
Yes.
I would recommend we wait for her feedback and see about next modifying.
Okay. Typically, the, the books normally get closed at the end of, at the end of July. So we have a little time for that as well. There also is a approval on here for an extension of Buffalo construction for Phase III of the contract.
So are you saying, because you just said the books close in July, are you saying we, we could hold over authority for budget transfers till next month?
We could, yeah.
How much are we, like, how much are we talking that we're transferring places?
I don't, I don't anticipate there being much at the, I told people if it's not purchased, if it's not, I've closed purchasing. And I've told people, even if they needed something extra at the end of the year, if it's not in by June 30, they're done. Because we should have it theoretically, it should be paid for in our possession by June 30, or it's next year's purchase. So I don't anticipate there should be too many this year at all. For the next month? I don't, for the next month.
Could you just elaborate? You talked about the reserves and moving some funds around. I think we, we have historically taken the approach of not designating the funds because similar to, you know, talking about being liquid in your investments, that allowed us to be flexible based on what needs may come up. It didn't change the picture overall. It's just how it was designated.
Okay.
So with, with regards to the TRS and ERS, you have very specific dollar amounts you're proposing. How are you arriving at those dollar amounts?
Okay, so TRS is actually a calculation based on the law. So you're allowed to look at the prior, 10% of the prior year's TRS salaries. And then you can put a small percentage on for, for interest. But I don't, I didn't add that. I just really looked at the prior year salary. And ERS, similarly, there, there's a calculation that you can use for the liability. I really looked at some other local cases and where they came in at, based on what we, what we know about what we have, or what we can, might assume.
Might assume.
So, the New York State Controller has suggested that we have more fund balance than we should have. But it really, I believe it looks like we have more fund balance than we, than probably other comparable districts, because they really do put those inappropriate reserves. And when you put it into a reserve, it becomes a part of a, it becomes part of your reserves, but it doesn't stay in unappropriated fund balan, balance. And you're really only supposed to maintain 4% in your unappropriated fund balance. So it is, it makes sense to put money in places where we would theoretically use it.
I think this is just all new to all of us, because we've never really done this before.
Okay. And then, so I want, when you talk about investing money, and those are two really separate things. So setting up fund balances, like, that's money that you put in a separate account for if you need that. But while it's sitting there, you can invest that, those funds. You can invest that, and you can invest your unappropriated fund balance. And if you know that you're not going to need it in the short term, or you don't believe you're going to, if you invest it in two separate, so we can do CDs, short-term, you know, whether it's six months or a year, and get some interest on that. And then with Night Class, you could put it in. There are, I will say, at the last district I worked at, I put in money that I knew I was going to spend during the year. But if I knew I wasn't going to spend it for six months, I would invest it. So when you get your big state aid payment upfront or right after taxes, there is some time when you can invest those funds.
So I'd also just maybe make a couple of comments. One is that if you're budgeting appropriately, there should be end-of-year funds available. If you have a district that doesn't have end-of-year funds available, there's a bigger problem that you're having.
Yes.
Right? So it's, within reason, you would want to have end-of-year funds. So now the question becomes, do you leave them as undesignated fund balance, so that is capped at 4%? So to go over it is to break a law, a financing law that exists in New York State. A lot of districts do it. The second thing is to create these reserve systems, which are savings accounts, that can be set up for different reasons, so they can be accessed in the future. The dollar amount doesn't change. The designation changes. And I guess I would just go back to emphasize that, you know, as part of my entry plan a year ago, Dr. Gropko, I know is part of your entry plan for the district, when you identify peer schools in New York State that have a profile that mirrors the profile here in Clarence, our reserve system is lower than what you will see in other peer districts. And so this is something that when we think about long-term financial health of a district, we want to be planful and thoughtful about how we are designating those resources. So, you know, Dr. Gropko, I think this makes sense. And these are some good questions and good conversation that we're having tonight.
What happens if, like, at some point, we're like, oh, we need some money. Can you take money out of those little savings accounts? Or do you have to?
Through board resolution, yes. Yes. You can take out of TRS and ERS, or out of liability through board resolution. You actually have to vote to expend a capital. So that would need voter approval. So you really need to be thoughtful about, are you putting that away? And that's why whenever you put money in a reserve, you really have to be thoughtful about where you're putting it, because it really should be serving a need that you have in the future, or a potential need that you have in the future. Repair reserve you can, you can spend with board approval as well.
So maybe just one last point, is that as part of your hiring process, Dr. Gropko, is that you were asked to prepare a, sort of a theoretical plan for establishing a reserve plan here in the district?
Yes.
And so I think this is your second month in Clarence. It seems like a lot longer than that. But that's something that you'd be thinking of more than spending two months in a place. But that is maybe a long-term goal in terms of establishing a reserve plan, so that we can really be thoughtful about our financial planning long-term.
Any other questions on the financial items? So we have 17 items for action, and the last is just informational. So I'd entertain a motion to approve items F1 to F17.
There's 18, actually.
Yeah, F18 is the informational.
Oh, okay.
Mike, are we including, are we keeping F5 in then?
Keeping F5 in for now, I guess I would, with the understanding that Dr. Gropko will come back with recommendations at the reorganization meeting on potential limits.
So moved?
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie's. Mr. Michelle, instructional?
For instructional this evening, we have three resignations, one request for a leave of absence, an amendment to a previous salary. We were given the transcript that made that adjustment. Appointments for this evening, we have 13 teaching positions, a TOSA position that's an annual appointment, a regular sub, social worker, two high school activity advisors, approval of hours for TCI annual training, some AIS support for the middle school, getting them ready for their foreign language exam and their Regents exams. Hours for summer-related services and screening hours as well. The list of teachers that are going to participate in the orientations for both freshman orientation and grade six orientation this summer, and hours for training for phonics first. P5 through P7 has summer hours for our guidance, our TOSA's, and our family support center. P8 is administrative interns for summer school. P9 has all of our summer school appointments. I would ask under middle school to please strike Dina Simcik. We were, we were notified today that that person will not be available to teach summer school this year. P10 is a list of our presentation compensation. P11 contains the curriculum projects from Dr. Overholt. Just a few changes in our substitute list for P12. And P13 is a resolution to authorize the execution of two administrator
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on the instructional items? Mr. Michelle, with regards to the hiring, obviously, we have a number of new appointments this evening and coming off of a very nice retiree recognition reception. There's quite a number of positions to fill. Where do we stand with remaining openings?
We probably have about five positions left that you should see in July.
Thank you. Any other questions? So I'd entertain a motion to approve P1 through P13 with the modification of P9 middle school substit, or summer appointment for Mr. Michelle.
Make your motion.
Thank you, Dennis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie's. Non-instructional?
Non-instructional. We have seven resignations, two of which are retirements. Mr. William Urban from Buildings and Grounds has served the district for 22 years. And Mary Klein, one of our support staff in the area of occupational support, has served the district for 15 years. So thank you to both of them for all of their service. P15 has one request for a leave of absence. 16 is a request to return to active employment. Appointments for this evening, non-instructional. We have a cleaner, one clerical position, a list of monitors that help to support some of the technical activities in the district, a bus attendant, head bus driver.
a bus attendant, head bus driver, and summer employees, including aides, clerical, nurses, buildings and grounds, and transportation positions. P18 has our changes to our substitute list, and P19 is a civil service resolution to allow non-residents to serve in competitive positions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Michelle? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve P14 to P19.
So moved.
Thank you, Mary Beth. All those are, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dennis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kerry's. All right. Next up, we have special needs and student activities. I think we have a number of year-end.
You got it. It's been busy in HR, it's been busy in special education as well. So I believe that our Committee on Special Education reviewed the programs and services of 228 students since our last meeting, and our CPSC reviewed the programs and services of 48 students. Nothing out of the ordinary.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve S1 and S2?
I'll make the motion, Mike.
Thank you, Dawn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tricia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That Kerry's. We have no board development or policy items this evening?
We did have a tentative calendar discussion for next year, I believe. Am I skipping too far ahead?
Yeah, I think we're okay for that now. We have the draft.
Got it, got it.
But before we publish the community calendar, we need to make sure we check a few dates.
Great, okay. Yep, we'll do it.
Thank you. In our packet, we do have some upcoming meetings. The next school board meeting, which will be the reorganization meeting, will be on Monday, July 11, in the middle school auditorium here. At this point, scheduled to start at 6:00 with a 30-minute executive session, followed by a 6:30 meeting, but that will be subject to change. We'll post updates on the website, and we do have a number of various summer retreats on our calendar as well, all of which will follow a number of busy weeks still ahead as we round out the year with graduation on the 25th of June. Anybody have any closing business? I will echo Dr. Frame's comments earlier and thank Mary Beth for joining us for the last three years. Little did you know, when you ran for the board, that you would be serving in probably one of the most interesting times in public service, school board service, so we thank you for all of your contributions over the three years, and we wish you well in whatever you choose to be going for.
On the wild ride.
So thank you. So with that, would you like to motion that we adjourn this evening to executive session to discuss a personnel matter?
Would I, anyone like to motion that we adjourn to executive session? I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.